Meeting of the general government, the time is now two twelve. And I'm calling this meeting to order. Uh, I thank you for the script for recording the meeting and today we have. Pat Solinger from the Parks Department, Alex Schreman from the Forestry Department, welcome gentlemen. Uh, online, we have Amy Loizel, did I pronounce that right, Amy?
Luazel.
What was it?
Luazel.
Luazel. Uh, Luazel, is that Francis?
Yeah.
Amy, Amy is from Scans here in Springfield. And we also have on the line, I believe is that Councilor Tim Allen, is that correct? Councilor Allen? You say it's Tim's iPhone, is that you, Councilor Allen? There you go, uh, welcome our Councilor Allen. Uh, here in the audience, we have Bill Malloy. Uh, outstanding resident in Springfield, in Forest Park area, we have Mr. Jerry Lattori. Uh, also from the Scans group, and we have Mr. Brian Scarry, also from the Scans group. Uh, so today, uh, we are gonna be talking about a tree ordinance that was put forward by the, um. Uh, Alex Schreman from the Forestry Department. Uh, just so that people know, this did first step. Uh, about two, three weeks ago, that's correct, Pat. Uh, and today is capable to go into, uh, the final steps, uh, so that it can become law here in the city of Springfield. My feeling is that, uh, and every, every, uh, bill. Once he passes first step, it comes into the general government for review and for amendments. And so, Alex, why don't I give you the floor? So you can give us the nutshell of this, um, ordinance and then we take it from there. Floor is here, Alex.
Thank you, counselor. So, um, so what this ordinance aims to do is to really to shore up the tree protections, um, in Springfield. And, um, clearly define and establish the rules around, um. You know, public trees and, and, and their protection and, and when people interact with public trees. Um, it offers everybody kind of the rules of the road, um, as far as, um, the procedures for public hearings. Um, mitigation, um, for when public tree, healthy public trees need to be removed. As well as violations, um, when they're removed without permission from the city. Um, so the, the current tree ordinance has been in place for many decades. Um, and focuses mainly on significant trees. Which are large, uh, trees that are thirty-six inches or larger, or seventy-five years of age. Um, all that language is, um, has been forwarded and included into this ordinance, but it, this really fleshes out. Um, the rules and regulations regarding other, um. Public trees, uh, particularly public shade trees, which are growing within the right of way. Um, as well as other public trees on city-owned properties. Um, the one of the key, some of the key points, um, is that it establishes a tree replacement fund. Uh, which, which will be able to, um, um. House funds that are collected through, uh, certain mitigation actions in this ordinance. And, um, go, which will go directly towards new tree planting in the city. Um, it, it, um. Provides some guidelines for construction, um, protection. Uh, so when, when, um, developers, utilities, um. Other people who may be working within the right of way or in and around, around public shade trees. Especially while they're, uh, digging underground, give some guidance on how to treat, um, public shade trees to protect them. In the best way possible while, you know, improving the infrastructure at the same time. Uh, it improves, uh, rules, um, and the permitting process. Um, establishes the requirement for certain permits for trimming, removal, planting and stump grinding. Uh, which there have, there have been, um, trimming and removal permits that have been formalized over the years. Uh, but the planting and stump grinding permits have been issued, um. You know, occasionally I started issuing them more, um, consistently, uh, since two thousand eighteen, but this formalizes that process. And provides actually some, some fees for some of the permits, not all. Just to, to cover some of the administrative costs, uh, incurred by the city to, to issue and manage the permits. Um, it does, um, provide rules, like I said earlier, about, um, tree removal, uh, mitigation. So requires inch for inch replacement. Uh, or payment in lieu of planting at a rate of fifty dollars per D V H inch. Uh, so that is if a tree, um, has to be removed for, uh, a legitimate purpose, uh, replacement of. Uh, um, of a utility, uh, essential utility. Uh, some other development purpose, development of a, of a, uh, previously undeveloped lot or redevelopment of a lot. Um, and, you know, the, the best design, um, you know, the, the tree is in conflict with the best design and, and it's agreed that the tree. Should be removed to move the project forward, there is, um. This rules for mitigation so that the city can recoup, um, some value for the loss of that tree. Um, and it's pretty minimal compared to the actual value of the tree, so it's, in our opinion, it's, it's very, uh, reasonable for, um. For folks who may come across, uh, this type of tree conflict. Uh, so it also, uh, provides some guidelines. For, uh, operations on private trees that are impacting the right of way. Um, and it clearly establishes, uh, fines and procedures for enforcement and appeal. For master law laws, chapter eighty-seven, uh, violations, which is the mass state public shade tree laws. Uh, which we have been following in Springfield for, for many decades now, but this, um, they've been mostly. Um, just defined by the state law, not codified in city ordinance. So this really clearly defines the forestry division and the city foresters' role in enforcing, um, that state. Uh, public shade tree law. And finally, it, um. Establishes, um, a fine for a violation of the significant tree ordinance. Um, as I said, that's been on the books since the mid-seventy, mid-seventies. Um, but there was no, uh, real teeth to it that included in the original ordinance and there was no. Fine or fee for someone who violated the ordinance, so this establishes a five hundred dollar fine. Uh, which is consistent with the mass general laws, uh, violation ticket. Uh, for violation of the significant tree ordinance, so it just gives the forestry division. A little more leverage to enforce that, the ordinance, um, and hopefully. Uh, you know, prevent tree companies or, or others from, from unduly cutting down historic trees in the city. So, you know, that, that's basically in a nutshell, um, you know, it. It really doesn't, it's not earth shattering as far as how we operate and how we protect trees in Springfield, we've been. Following these same and similar rules for, for many years now. Um, but what it really does is, as I said in the beginning, defines the rules of the road for everybody. Who may be interacting with public shade trees or public trees. So that it's clear what the rules are and what happens if the rules are violated or how we can, um. You know, how we can work together to come to common sense solutions when there are, you know, development and other conflicts with public trees.
Thank you. If I may just add a, a couple of things, one, I just wanna. Tell Alex, he's done a great job putting this new ordinance together, working with the law department. Uh, it's been three to four years at least in the making. And. In the past year and a half, we started instituting some of these practices. And to Alex's credit, we've had a couple of our, uh, contractors that were building houses. We, what do you, probably total fifty, sixty trees maybe? Yeah, we've gotten sixty trees donated as liner stock in our nursery. By following this ordinance and, and we, we told the contractor, hey, this is what we're, we're headed. And he stepped right up and, uh, provided those trees, so it, it, we, it prove it, it, it'll work. And, uh, it's long overdue and it's gonna get more trees out in our streets and that's what we need to do. Sustainability for the city.
Thank you, Pat, uh, if I may just remind, uh, all the participants remotely to please. Uh, make sure that, uh, there's the background noise, uh, can you mute yourself, please?
You are a dollar. You're a place.
Tim, I think you gotta mute your phone, Tim, we're getting a lot of.
Tim, Tim, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Councilor Allen.
Well done.
Yep. Got you, Tim. Live technology. Got it, thank you, Tim. Um. So, Pat, is there anything else you wanna add or?
No, we're, we're just grateful to you, counselor, for, uh, putting this forward in the subcommittee meeting to keep it moving and not delaying its passing, we. We're anxious to get this passed, uh, we thank the mayor for putting it forward to the council, the mayor is a hundred percent. In favor of this, uh, ordinance to move forward, so. Uh, like I said, it's long overdue and it's gonna just set, like Alex said, set the rules for it so everyone has a clear understanding. Uh, of, one, we wanna protect our trees and if you do have to do something, we will work with you. To accomplish your goals, but at the end of the day, we're gonna protect the trees of the city of Springfield.
Absolutely, uh, I just have some quick, uh, follow-up questions, uh, to, um. Alex or Pat, if I may, uh, just some brief questions. Uh, just our question, how many, what's the total stock of the trees in the city roughly? Both private and city-owned?
So, we have, we have a hundred percent tree inventory, um, and that inventory shows. About, uh, thirty-six thousand trees that we managed, um, just as street trees. Now, that includes street trees and many of our park trees, we do have a partial park inventory. That we've been slowly collecting, um, over the years. Um, but that does not include wooded parcels. So really, you know, under the city's management, it's probably ten times that. Uh, when you include all of our wooded parks and other trees that we technically have. Um, you know, management over, uh, but, uh, as, as street trees, you know, as you see within the tree belt on this, on the, on the street. And in our manicured areas of the park, it's about thirty-six thousand trees.
Right, so thirty-six thousand, that's, uh, public trees and then park trees. Uh, when you say wooded, uh, uh, when you say, um.
Wooded lot?
Wooded lot. The, are you saying, is that private property you're talking about?
No, no, that's just public, like, say Forest Park, uh, Blunt Park, Van Horn, any of the wooded. Any of the wooded, um, areas of the city. The thirty-six thousand just is our, just our street trees and our manicured areas. The way we collect the park inventory is if you can mow around it, we, uh, with a, with a lawnmower. We collect the information on that tree, so if that tree's located in the, in a wooded edge where you wouldn't be putting a lawnmower in. We don't collect those individual stems, uh, but if it's in a manicured part of the park, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's just our tree, tree inventory, counselor. And another point, so one, when Alex took over, we were on twenty-eight thousand trees in that inventory. He's grown our tree inventory up to thirty-six thousand. And I think our highest, when, uh, back when Henry Mathew were in the forty thousand range, so. Alex isn't too far off getting us back to we, where we were in the early eighties.
So, so, so that I'm clear, so the trees, for example, Forest Park in the area. The ones by Forest Park Avenue and Washington Boulevard, are those, please counted on this number?
So that, not on the wooded section, but within the, you know, within a Washington Boulevard, within the median there, those trees would be. Ones on the tree belt on the house side, and then a certain amount, the ones that are closest to the curb on the, on the Forest Park side actually are inventoried. Because they fall within the right of way of the road, but anything beyond the right of way of the road. In the park proper would not be inventoried as part of that.
And this ordinance deals with our urban forest, our right-of-way trees.
Right, now, Alex, uh, what about private properties, do we have an idea how many trees we have on private property?
That, that's a good question, I mean, we, you know, they estimate, so for every street tree, they estimate that. There's probably a hundred other trees in the community, um, and that's just a general, very general rule of thumb. On public and private property, so that includes like all forest land, um, and other privately owned. Um, land in the city, uh, but we don't, to be perfectly honest, have a good, uh, inventory of, um. Tree, you know, the number of trees or quality and type of trees on private property.
Canopy scan loads.
We have, yes, we have, we have a, a canopy, uh, a canopy cover, uh, numbers. In which we're at about thirty-six percent there.
And so what we do is we, uh, we're working with the state. As you've seen, we, in certain neighborhoods, we are planting trees to increase that canopy cover in those neighborhoods. And Alex's active back grant just got approved for another three years as well. So, and that's city-wide that we can plant trees now.
But, so gentlemen, please allow me to, to confess my, my own lack of knowledge on this matter. Uh, I am not particularly, uh, a, a forester, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Uh, however, I do know that trees are extremely important, uh, we needed to breathe to, to process, uh, C O two. And so, uh, create oxygen. Uh, now. Until lower the temperatures and some of the things that affect our, our, our human existence, of course. If, if I was gonna say, the city of Springfield as a whole. What percentage do we have? Right now. I don't know if that's the only thing with thirty-six percent. That the trees covered and what's the ideal suggested? Percentage that we should be striving for?
So, yeah, so we are about thirty-six percent or so, um, to the latest estimate of our canopy cover. Um. The, the, I, the Forest Service, uh, cites a number of forty percent. Canopy cover that they, uh, promote as a good coverage for, uh, in any urban area, uh, or urban city. Uh, so we're not too far off, but the, the reality is, you know. We have some really beautiful park properties like Forest Park, Blunt Park, Van Horn Park, when you have these large forested parcels. It kind of pumps that number up a little bit and you look at, um, you know, when you, when you break it down to the neighborhood level. We do have a severe need for trees in, in certain neighborhoods, especially. When you exclude those large forested parcels in particular neighborhoods. And, you know, the, the reality is, um. Increasing canopy cover even by one percent is extremely difficult. Uh, it, it really doesn't rely on, on just planting a whole bunch of trees. It relies on planting a whole bunch of trees and then sustaining those trees to maturity, so. Uh, you know, you can plant a million trees, but that's not going to guarantee in twenty or thirty years that you're going to have. Uh, a certain percentage increase in tree canopy, because those trees have to survive and we know that in urban conditions. Uh, oftentimes, it's, it's a tough goal for, for these trees to really get established. Um. Become productive and vigorous and provide those benefits that we all enjoy.
Okay. Um. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the point, because you, I just raised some questions that is in my mind. But, um, let me talk to all the fine, Alex, if I may, they haven't opened it up to, to the, uh. To the floor. Um, you say that there's gonna be a five hundred dollars fine, is that gonna be per occurrence?
I'm sorry, say that, you say that again, I missed it.
There's gonna be a five hundred dollar fine for the removal of a tree. Uh, without the right, without the proper permit, is that gonna be five hundred dollars per occurrence?
Sorry.
Per occurrence.
Breaking, you're breaking it up. Yeah, I'm breaking it up a little bit.
Is it per occurrence or?
Per occurrence, yes, yes, so that is, that's per occurrence, um, so that's for a removal or, uh, uh, illegal trimming. Of a tree, um, so if, you know, if you've, if you've illegally trimmed. Um, you know, two trees on your property, then it's a thousand dollars, it's five hundred dollars for each.
Question, right, so Alex, so how do we put tip into this fine?
What's that?
There's gonna be a city ordinance fine, right? If they don't care, it's gonna go into where?
The, the fines, I do not believe will go into the, uh, into the, into the tree fund, they will have to go into the general fund.
Right, well, how do we, how do we force the, the owners to pay or the person to pay this? Because, uh, one of the points that we have here that we've been slowly tackling is. You get a, you get an ordinance fine, people just rip them off and. Don't pay it.
Yeah, so, so currently, there is no, um. Follow-up enforcement, I guess, we would issue them an invoice for the tree violation. Um, and typically, when we, um. When we issue these violation tickets, they're typically to, we, we prefer to issue them to the tree company. Um, if it was a professional tree company that did the work, um, and in those cases. Um, no new permits would be allowed to be issued to that company until their previous fine, fines and fees were paid. Uh, current with the city.
Um, we've had great success, when we've had a few instances where we've had a fine for a different reason. We've worked with the law department and the police department to collect those funds, illegal dumping is a good one for that. And we've had very good success, and we would file the same thing, so that does not. Uh, bother me at all, uh, we have, we have mechanisms in place to, um, get, recover those funds.
Oh, Pat, uh, if I may, we just do it with side, sideline here, so. Uh, thank you for picking up those tires on Forest Park Avenue on.
Yes.
Boulevard, uh, I was very dismayed to see, we got up early in the morning to see a plethora. Of, you know, uh, tires being dumped, I was very disturbed and something that, uh. Um, you know, I'm gonna talk to you offline. Uh, because, uh, it can't happen, it just cannot happen in the Forest Park, in any park.
No, no, well, unfortunately, it does, but we, again, we have a mechanism in place and. We're checking out different cameras to see if we can find out who the violator was, so.
Thank you for that.
Stay tuned.
Okay, good.
Say that again?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
We might catch the violator.
Yeah, yeah, uh, please let me know, uh, so.
Our rope crews are doing a great job, we've got the three crews just on litter and.
Yeah.
Making, uh, I was so happy, I was going to church Saturday afternoon and. The top of Taylor Street was completely cleaned, I had to do a quick email out to the crew, they, you know, everyone stopped, they're. You see that improvement?
Right, now, uh, if I, uh, go and talk to the matter ahead, Pat, um. The, uh, there was the, uh, the mitigation fund, that's gonna be a separate line item? Is that gonna be on the, you, what, general times or, or is that gonna be eventually absorbed into the general fund?
Uh, for, and that's for assisting a homeowner that might not be able to pay the fine, you mean, counselor?
No, 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 uh, for the mitigation fund, for the, uh, the.
Yeah, the mitigation fund would be set up under forestry, so that's, uh, an account that we would just set. Once you pass this, then our, the city comptroller will establish that fund within forestry.
Yeah, but, but that will always be there, it would not be absorbed into the general fund, correct?
No, that would, that would be like a revolving account, so it could only be spent on what you have in this ordinance.
And, and refresh my memory, what is that, the points that are coming to be used for?
That's going to be used for forestry operations to plant more trees, whether it be liner stock. Or a physical two or three-inch caliper tree to put right out on the street.
Very well, very well, thank you, Pat. Uh, Councilor Allen, do you have any questions, sir? Uh, Tim, Tim.
Uh, thank, thank you, it's hard to go off mute and on unmute, but thank you for asking, uh. No, um, I guess, well, I guess my, I'm, I'm glad we're at this point and, um. And, you know, good explanation by Alex, et cetera. My only confusion so far would be, um. The difference between what Pat, what you were just describing with a revolving fund. And the other money that would go into a general fund, where we, you know, uh, so, appa- apparently. That the different fines we'd have or whatever are handled differently, so I'm just a little confused on that. I don't know if Lindsay's on here or Pat Burns or whatever, but we could ask them later in the, uh. In the finance committee meeting.
Of yours. Counselor Allen, so the fine, the fine, why do I have to go to the general fund? And then, like I said, if we're working with a contractor for the inch for inch replacement. And he, instead of buying the trees, wants to pay the cash value of that tree, that's what would go into that revolving account for us to purchase. Either liner stocks or, or trees for the particular project.
And have you re, Pat, have, that's good, have you reviewed that with, you know, Pat Burns and Kathy Bono?
Everyone's got a copy of the ordinance.
All right, great, okay. Um, and they agree with that, all right, that's great.
Finance before it goes on the council agenda.
That's good. It sounds good, no, I'm all right with that, um, thank you for including me.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Allen. Uh, so I think at this point, what I'd like to do, we have, uh, members of, uh, the Scan Group here in Springfield. Uh, by the way, uh, good, good job, guys, on, uh. The good press that you guys, we, guys recently received regarding the drain, the drain project. Um, I look forward to see that art go up, uh, it was, it was very good, I look forward to it. Uh, you guys are doing a good job, so, uh, the Scan Group, uh, it's a local group, I will be. Uh, turn it over to Amy, who is the president of the group. Uh, we also have some other members here from Scan Group that wanna chime in. Uh, so, uh, Amy, the floor is here, if you could please introduce yourself. Uh, your home address, your, your address and, uh, tell us a little bit about Scan, please.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Davila, and thank you, everybody, for, um, uh, bringing this forward. My name is Amy Loizel, I live at one twenty-one Ben's Street, zero one 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 eight. In Tim's Ward seven, and, um. Uh, we formed Scans because there was a clear interest amongst, uh, a lot of the residents. Uh, specifically around, uh, Watershops Pond and, um, also some folks in Forest Park with interest a- around the park and, um. We just found that there wasn't a way for, for us to get together and to be a little bit more involved beyond just, you know. We love Keep Springfield Beautiful, we love picking up the trash, we love, um, supporting ReGreen and volunteering with the Forest Park, uh, activities. But to go a little bit more beyond that and become a little bit more involved in. Um, initiating activities and supporting certain policies that we think are vital for the city. So Scan stands for Springfield, um, Conservation and Nature Stewardship. And our mission is to advocate for, uh, protect and, uh, preserve. The natural resources of Springfield and we really see, um, these as a public good. So our mission is focused on the idea of natural resources as a public good. And not just as, like, you know, uh, property demarcations. Um, so. The reason that we're here today is first to say that we're really excited that the nineteen seventies, uh, significant tree ordinance is being updated. We've spoken about this with Alex and Pat. That, that old, you know, fifty-year-old ordinance is not active. So it's great to see there's gonna be a tree. There's, great to see there's gonna be a tree replacement fund. There's going to be, um. Actual oversight of the fines, because as of right now, the developers cut these trees down and don't, don't, don't pay anything. Um, and we know from monitoring developments, um, and clear-cutting over the past. A couple of years that they've, that they've cut significant trees in these, in these housing developments that they've put up. Um, so that's exciting, uh, our concerns are just more that it doesn't, it's not future-looking. So it's great that this is a significant tree ordinance that builds on the past and advances that past and, and uses. Some contemporary science and, and forestry practices to bring in attention to the street trees and the, and the public trees. But. We really want to look towards the future, we're already living with climate change, climate change is here. Um, uh, you know, we got hardly any snow, we had fifty-degree days in February. Um, Heritage Park Pond didn't freeze more than four or five days this winter. Uh, when I was growing up, it froze for three months straight. So we are living with climate change, the flooding, the, the, um, the, the runoff. And the only thing that cities can do to, to deal with that is preserve their mature trees. And so I go to Alex's point that he said earlier. We can plant three thousand trees over the next couple of years, they're not all gonna survive. And it's gonna take twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years for some of them to be able to do what the mature trees currently do. So, we applaud ReGreen and we're really excited that developers are gonna have to replace trees that they take down. But we are very, very concerned about the loss of mature trees, um, and many of them are on private property. And so what we're proposing, and we'd like to see an amendment to this ordinance, that there become a permitting process. That's a little bit more, um, future-looking and based on climate change where. Developers and homeowners, if they have a fully wooded lot, meaning it's a corner-to-corner wooded lot, we're not talking about like if they've got five trees. We're saying if they buy a wooded lot, which we've seen. Almost ninety wooded lots clear-cut in sixteen acres in East Forest Park over the last six years. That's thousands of trees, that's not like, that's not a drop in the bucket, that's ninety lots. That had nothing on them but trees, that, those trees are now gone. So even if we were to plant five hundred trees this year, we've lost, in, in this area, we've lost thousands. So what we want is a permitting process that's similar and I, I'm gonna put it in the chat. I know most of you can't see it, but um. Oh, no, it's telling me my message is too long. It won't put it in the chat. But I sent this by email to Victor, to Tim, to Zeta and to other city counselors. Um Alex had a copy of it. Probably like six months ago. Um and so we'd like to see that, like what developers have to do with wetlands. Where they have to have somebody come out, check out the wetlands, figure out if the wetlands is active, what it's doing. Like what the developer has to do. We'd like to see something similar for trees and um and uh other cities are already doing this. So that would be our proposed amendment would be um the uh permitting process for permits to cut trees. On.
Counselor Davila, can you answer that question? So that would come under the.
If you give it, Pat, if you give me a quick second before you ask your question, uh if I may, uh in, in this proposed uh amendment that you have. I mean, it's a permit process. Uh what criteria is gonna be used within the permitting process? To determine if a tree is gonna be taken, could be taken now or not?
So, I mean, there's a variety. Uh different cities have had different municipal ordinances. So the municipal ordinances that we researched. It really depended on the city, but some of them used uh tree canopy so that if it was a massive lot where they were gonna go in and. Clear cut, you know, um hun- hundreds and hundreds of trees for one development, then they would measure by tree canopy. Other cities and um Brian, Brian and Jay might be able to give you some other examples too, cause all three of us researched these municipal ordinances. Um and others, others would do it by percentage. So they would say, okay, you're gonna buy this lot. We wanna keep this percentage of trees on the lot and you can cut this other amount.
Is it, is the age of the tree a factor?
Um, yeah, that they would do by um age of tree or tree canopy.
Okay. But give me a quick second, buddy. I promise I got you. Uh so Amy is basically city dependent, right? That's what you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, but.
The city, the city can determine its own measurements, you know, but and we have a variety of um samples of how cities have done it.
So I, I applaud Amy and and I, I agree with her. So I think, but that has to go under the planning board. Our department's only charge of street trees. Uh we, we're not, uh our role in government is not with private development. Or lots that falls under the planning board. So that would be, uh you would have to have a, get a council meeting with Tim Sheehan shop on that issue. So like you can't amend that order, our ordinance for private lots, cause we don't, we don't, um, we're not in charge of private lots. So that's why it comes under the planning board's role of responsibility of government. Alex does not have authority or the park commission does not have the authority over private lots. We only have the authority over a public shade trees.
Right. Okay, so Pat, you said that we need to follow up with uh who, with planning?
You would, you would create that, that ordinance for the planning board to deal with that issue. They would be, and that would be your enforcement agency over that issue.
All the other municipalities use their city forester.
But they might, their former government might use a city forester in, in the, in the planning board role. We don't. Springfield's not set up that way. Our, our, our operation, our government is we have a planning department and they deal. With development, not, not the park department or the forestry department.
Got you. Did you check with the low department this time?
I just know that as a fat counselor. It's just that's, we, we're only in charge of the public way.
Well, I'd like to see some of that change. I don't know how we can possibly do that.
But that, that's a whole government, that, that's a huge change. So again, we're just trying to get our role done and what we do. So that's a whole other topic of discussion of.
Got you, got you. Uh, very well.
What other cities did uh uh Counselor Davila was they set up like an environmental committee and the city forester? And a couple other people from city offices were on the environmental committee and then they became like the people that oversaw the permitting process.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you so much. Uh. Councilor Allen?
Yeah, pardon me, Counselor Davila. Um, yeah, I, I'm not sure if this is exactly what you're talking about, but just as an FYI. We've been looking at with Phil Gromy, with Amy, with others who have, we're gonna put together a meeting for April. Um on re- relooking at the, at the subdivision process as a part of the, when the zoning ordinance was redone ten or twelve years ago. When I first got on the council, uh. Which, it was never, I found out from Phil recently, we never really completed a relook at the subdivision process. So people like Walter Gould and Leo Florian, who's on, Leo Florian is on the planning, uh planning board. Walter Gould is on the ZBA and they're both civic association leaders. Um so they've come to me, I've been to Tim Sheehan, I've been to Phil, we're gonna try to put together a meeting on the subdivision. Require, excuse me, requirements, which includes the public, which includes Amy and scans and stuff. It just see we get a laundry list of the. Of the things that might be problems in, in quote unquote, the subdivision process. And this might come up in that, Amy. I, you know, I'm, it, I don't know is. Uh going by what, what Pat said that our former government wouldn't allow us to take over, uh requiring private owners to do that. Maybe that's something that'll come up in that meeting. I know you've said it before and I think it's, there, there's some good ideas in there, but um.
You're, you're absolutely right on the right track, Tim, with just what you said. That's exactly how you should be moving us through the Tim Shan shop. And it, and I agree with Amy. It is needed for our city to have that, that order to be updated.
Very well. Uh, very well. Uh now, uh do you don't, Councilor Allen, any other questions, sir?
I, I, I just wanted that point to be made. I'm not sure what Amy's talking about is a perfect fit. In the, in the looking at the subdivision, but a lot of the issues that it come up with, with uh like three of the. Proposed subdivisions in Ward seven are the one behind social like the Fay, uh which is twelve plant, it's been approved by the planning board. Uh no, no uh construction as yet. Of course, the Crystal Brook and West Crystal Brook development, it's been going on for a couple of years. And the one behind Stop and Shop on, at Allen and Cooley. And this, some of the same issues come up at all of them, water, traffic, et cetera. And people, it's just time, I believe, to just sit down and have a discussion and see what, what. What angle we could take or what, what the, you know, master list of issues is and see there's something we can start to take a look at.
Questions for us?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh you guys were talking about when you showed it. Can you repeat that again, Pat?
We have a three o'clock zoom that we have to jump on. Do you have any other questions for us?
Uh, well, I don't, but I was gonna give the floor to the scan, to the people here in the room, so. But if you need to go, you can go and uh we will follow up, but um.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if there's going to be two different legislative approaches here, one is from tree, uh uh that, you know, forestry. And one is gonna be from subdivision planning board. When we get and, and this, and seeing how this particular legislation seems to be going forward more quickly. Will the results of this legislation and the language in this legislation? Be available for us to use as advocacy for values in the other process? Could, even though these are separate parts of government, could we say we already have this kind of language in our. In our city legislature, can we at least, I know these are too independent, but can we at least use? The new legislation that might come from this as leverage when we talk about the other, the, the redoing the subdivision law? In other words, are these gonna be completely separate conversations? Cause it is one city and we have one set of values, right?
Well, I think it's definitely gonna be a little some overlapping.
Yes, and so that we can at least say, hey, these are the values we're striving for right now, you know.
The Council of Davila would just coordinate a meeting with uh Tim Sheehan shop along with Tim Allen in the lot department and they would come. To a conclusion that we, we wanna update the planning board ordinance to include the uh description that Amy gave uh to, to us.
I mean.
Very well. Uh so now, uh Pat, it's uh two fifty-two. Uh you wanna hang on for a bit more minutes? Well, maybe some questions from the audience here?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. So let's uh go down the road. Uh, Mr. Latory?
Uh, thank you, uh Mr. Chairman. So Juan Latory, one twenty-two Forest Hills Road. Thanks for this. Um. This is really a, a great conversation and um there are some great points in this revised ordinance. Um, I, I had one question for Alex um through the chair. Um. Alex, um, one thing that's come up that you alluded to that is important is ma- making sure we're providing proper maintenance for the existing street trees. And I see in the ordinance, um you're proposing a twenty-five dollar fee for uh tree trimming. Um is, is that what people pay now, even though it's not um, you know, documented um within the city ordinance? Like if you're a private citizen that needs a, say a limb cut back because it's hanging over a, a garage or something like that?
No, there, there is no charge for, for public tree work, um city tree work that I believe um. Um alludes to a, the, the um, the permit fee. But there, there.
Right, that's what I mean. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So there is no, there is no fee if, if they call the city and request service from the city. Um that simply is there um as the permit fee, which would be um issued to the tree company requesting to do the work.
Okay, understood. And just one other question through the chair. As it relates to the process of collecting. Um payment for the proper removal of a tree or trimming of a tree. Um are the utilities exempt from this? For example, if, if, if gas or electric or cable said, we'd like to remove five trees to do some work in the right of way. Um what happens today in terms of what they pay the city and what will happen after this?
So, so the utilities, particularly Eversource, um has been extremely um. Um, good with this, with following the process as it's lined out here, um even prior to this language being in city ordinance. Um they have provided dozens of trees um as replacements. Um there was one large tree. Um by uh, by Frankonia Golf Course that they were doing a pole upgrade. Um and, you know, meeting with the engineers out there, it was clear, um aside from really over engineering. Um some support poles and really causing, you know, extra um. Infrastructure that um, you know, in the area, it was the best choice to remove the tree. And in that case, um they provided, I think about around twenty-two, two to two and a half inch. Um trees as replacements. So they've almost exclusively um gone for the, the inch for inch replacement and just have had. Um trees delivered directly to uh Forest Park and we planted those trees around the city. So. Um it, it's, you know, it works. Yeah, it works. And they've been one of the, you know, um, I guess, early adopters of this process. They're used to it in other communities. It's not uh something that's um unique, will be unique to Springfield. Uh but like I said, at least we will have something written in city ordinance that we can all point to and say, this is, you know, this is the way we have to do things.
Okay, thank you for that, Alex. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just close in saying that, you know, I, I, I agree with um Amy's comments that. Uh this is great, but we have, we have a broader vision and, and we will be very appreciative of your support along with Alex. Um and Pat's in this upcoming meeting, um because we think this is a critical issue for our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Uh moving on, Mr. Malone, do you have any, any questions? All right, thank you. Uh so before you go, Pat, uh Mr. Brian here in the audience. Had mentioned to me uh that he wants that perhaps we should add uh a definition. Uh for climate change mitigation, is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Uh and so you, you think that that should go under three sixty-eight dash two on the definitions?
Yeah.
Uh, Pat, were you able to see, did you see that? Are you familiar with that? Uh a, a proposal?
We do mention it. We do mention climate change. Can you read the sentence? Yeah, so it does um.
Where are you reading out of, uh what line?
It does talk about reduced ambient temperature, uh talks about the environmental benefits. Um.
Can, can you tell me where we can?
In the findings in three sixty-eight dash one, we don't specifically, I uh define climate change. Um in that, in the findings, in the, in the first section, three sixty-eight. Dash one, we do talk about enhancing environmental quality. Oh, we do say mitigate climate change. I thought it was. So in sixteen dash one, we do discuss that um that one of the goals of this ordinance, it does include. To mitigate uh climate change.
Got you. Let me read to you, uh if I may, gentlemen, the proposed language that Brian, Mr. Brian has proposed. Uh is climate change mitigation. Commitment to practices of sustainable development, which allow communities to capture the opportunities of development while minimizing the risk. To a loss of sensitive natural resources, optimizing the tree canopy and maintaining the integrity. Over wetlands and woodlands as community values relevant to the decision-making process of any proposed development.
Yeah, so uh Victor, uh that would go in your new ordinance that you wanna do with the planning department, cause you're talking about wetlands and everything. Again. This ordinance, we are only in charge of the public uh, uh way.
Can I? Sure. Yeah, again, I'm Brian Scally, five fifty-nine Crystal Brook Drive, and I belong to SCAN. And all I'm asking is, uh since the, I'm, since the, I, the technical terms in three sixty-eight one. Findings are defined in three sixty-eight two definitions. I thought it was just proper for this. For this ordinance, that the term, which is a technical term, mitigate climate change, climate change mitigation. That a definition be put into three sixty-eight two definitions, that's all. I'm not asking for more than that. Just, it's just a part of the, just to complete. Um the relationship between three sixty-eight one and three sixty-eight two, to have all the definitions in three sixty-eight two, cause that one was.
Yep, so we'll write a definition uh that coincides with this ordinance for dealing with the climate change of the public way.
So you want, so you want it right, you want the definitions, is that what you said?
Yeah, well, no, cause I, reading his, I think that definition you read just now, Victor, fits on what. Uh Amy was talking about for the broader uh one with the land, where we will deal with the climate change definition. That deals with public uh street shade trees. So excellent suggestion and we're gonna include it in the ordinance. So we'll get that language to you.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm missing something here in the conversation. But what I said, you say, are you saying you're gonna include a definition of climate change?
We are.
One, sorry, one at a time, but.
Yes, we will include a definition of climate change that relates to this ordinance of climate change in the public way, shade trees.
Okay, very well. Uh and so A- uh Amy also has some proposals. Uh Amy, uh Pat, have you been able to look at Amy's proposals amendments?
I, I, I haven't, but what I, 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 again, I told you, I agree with Amy. That's, I think her amendments go with the broader through the planning department. We do not control private land development in the city. Only the planning board does.
Well, she did send it to uh, to me. I don't have it apparently, but printer decided to malfunction on me, but uh. I don't even recall exactly what they are. Amy, can you give us a thirty second overview, what to include?
Um, so as I, as um, as Pat said, it was, we're, we're, we're concerned about oversight of the private property. So um if what Pat is saying is, is accurate and um if what Tim is saying is gonna go forward. Then our proposals would fit with a new subdivision and planning board, but our proposals are that. Somebody with forestry experience, and this has been a problem with the wetlands assessments that have been going on, is like, we need somebody that's actually. A scientist and expert in this and not to be relying on the developers and the developers' lawyers for giving us what it, their, you know, the natural resources are. So we had really wanted Alex to be involved in this, but it sounds like they're not interested in, in being involved in this side of it. But what we want is somebody with forestry experience to go into these wooded lots and do a permitting process. So that. But what we want is somebody with forestry experience to go into these wooded lots and do a permitting process so that you know, there, it said, we have this much tree canopy in this area. You cannot cut back X amount of trees because we need to maintain the tree canopy in this area. So, you would use tree canopy measurements as well as like tree measurements. So, it would need to be somebody with forestry training to then say what percentage of trees could be cut, if any. And then the.
I can answer that question if you can reply. So.
Developer, I'm sorry, Pat, I'm not done. I didn't finish. Thank you though.
I know, I know, but I have a solution for you.
Order, order, please.
And then, and then, and then we had a.
Amy, Amy, no, excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Pat. I know everybody wants to talk. I know everybody likes, it's a special issue. Pat, I know you wanna get this to do, so do I. But please, one other time, because my head's spinning. Uh, who was talking the last? I think it was Amy, right?
I just need to finish my point. So, and then, as with the replacement, we would also want a replacement fund that even if the developers were given permission to cut, say, twenty percent or thirty percent of the trees on the lots, that they would have to pay into a fund to cut those trees.
Okay. Pat?
Right, so what happens, Amy? In this case, the conservation commission has staffed, and then uh, the planning department would order that they have, the developer has to hire a person that would do that mitigation under your new ordinance.
Yeah, that's what we don't trust. So, we don't trust developers getting their own scientists and lawyers.
But you've got the conservation staff person that works for the planning department and for the planning board that would, would make sure that, that would happen. There is, there is, there isn't a city mechanism in place. You just need the ordinance. You're, you're, you're halfway there. You just now need to write the ordinance that there are the staff piece in with people in the planning department that would do all that.
Okay, very well. Uh.
I missed that. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, you know, Kevin Chaffee left the City of Springfield employment like a year and a half ago, uh, August or so of twenty-two. And Phil's just hired somebody uh, recently. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, Amy. He hired somebody. Adam Anulowicz, I think is his name. He's actually coming over from the park department.
Right.
Um, and he, he's gonna be in that spot, and he's got city experience because he's been working in Pat's organization. I can't speak more to it than that, but we now have somebody who, like Pat said, is in this city's employment and would be looking out for the city's um, interests, if you will.
He has a four-year degree in environmental management and so forth.
Yeah, so I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a quick time check. It's three oh five right now. Uh, does anybody have any further questions, anything else they would like?
I'm all set, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Uh, very well. So, I think what I'm going to do is, um, I, I think we're in, in the cause of great things for the city, uh, protecting our, our tree, uh, stock here in the city. And ensuring that uh, we, we have a good, cool city, that we don't have a desert out here. And so, this is good work. I applaud everybody involved in this. Uh, I think we need, have to have at least one more meeting to really iron out uh, someone's definitions. But you say you're gonna go back, you're gonna create the definition that you think fit a mitigation, a climate mitigation that fits this, um, this ordinance proposal. Uh, I will check about your thoughts about with the law department, about creating a different ordinance uh, that will be more tailored with, towards the planning department. And uh, I'm hoping that we can wrap this up by the end of the month, perhaps, the latest. I, I think it's very durable. And so, what I'm going to be doing today, I'm going to be suggesting to the body that we continue this to the uh, next regular meeting, uh, until we figure out this minor uh, uh, wrinkles uh, that appear to come up so that we can uh, put this uh, to bed by, by the end of the month.
We'll have that definition by Friday, Counselor.
Come again, okay, no problem. Uh, very well. Any other thoughts, common questions, suggestions?
No, thank you.
I'll set.
Very well. Very, very well then. Uh, I'm, I'm joining the meeting at three oh seven.